I saw red bulbs, so I never got it counted up. It was scattered out in the apricots. I was going all over.
Yes. I follow decorating committee. The painter probably is. Art is good. That's right. That's a shame.
So I'm glad. I do what I'm worried.
I'm worried we would have been able to say.
Oh, yeah. He was retired too.
Yes, going around having his boy. For Mary.
I worked there like one day. Worked for New Hall.
I see this. This is true.
I don't know the segment. I know the daughter and wife seem like real. And the whole family.
She was by.
Did Jack?
Relate?
No, already. I didn't know that. I knew she was just a threat in this area. I didn't know if she was a live. Although she liked. Oh, hi. That's why. I feel wrong though. I feel wrong. I mean, two of the lights.
This was.
You know, the old people. They were terrified. They were happy. I believe it's. I used to feel that. I had four jump in front. Being their shift and I have rates ceiling on like. Holy, holy, couldn't get out where. The door was. We raised the ceiling. One of the first guys to have. I remember Richard Lawson down at Crawford Street. You know, from the church to the house. That's.
My favorite.
Like a. Part of that.
I only get one of these.
It was any kind of. He isn't very old. This could have been. Matter of fact, it wouldn't be. Rate from early to. So like.
So we bring this meeting to order.
I salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
So we jump right into this. Any problems with the minutes? Do we accept the minutes?
Uh, I don't think I was the visitor the last.
Oh, not part of it.
Take care of that. Well, I mean, I was a visitor first.
Yeah, sorry. That's just autopilot.
You know other problems with this?
Motion to adopt.
Second, one favor.
Aye.
That takes us to finance. It's something on the revenue side. I'd like you to look at. It should catch your eye. Everybody noticed? We are on the revenue side. Just. Yes, it's different than the one that I have. You've had.
A few. The one fee. It already has a figure pre-done on it.
Yeah.
Be rounded a lot of the.
A little bit different.
What were you hoping that for?
I thought that she had passed through at the bottom in four and fire. She was so.
No, we fixed that.
You fixed that. I didn't get the last piece of the.
Yeah, Reverend Spade said that he had to help us too when he received his.
It'd be a minor.
I didn't. Yeah, they're.
Okay.
She has the. Yes, yes. So you were double counted. That's. Yeah, no. Why don't I have? I don't.
Yeah, that's big. You should have two thousand nineteen and two thousand eighteen.
This is year to date. This is eighteen year to date.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the year to date. I thought that you did.
I don't know how you're trying off the same.
It has two batteries on it.
Right, it has four and five insurance. So we're looking at two different things.
Well, this is the one.
I'll tell you what, since. Why don't you go through? All right, that's. You fixed that. So it's not a.
No.
Double counting there. I'm not sure what we have here. So why don't you go through the finance report? Just have us approve what your expenditure is like.
Just the expenditures?
Yes. There's nothing wrong, right? Did anybody make that up? All right, so if we go to expenditure, just give me a second here. Get up to speed. She. I'm just.
Make sure you have the right year.
Are you saying these extra sheets are last year's?
They're next year's.
Oh, they're next year's. This is a budget.
Sheet one, sheet two. We don't have to do anything unless you add it. We'll get to that in a minute. We go through this. This room. Okay, this is. Yeah, the one you gave me is different. I'm looking at on my computer. So I think now that's just going to be the process. Yeah, okay, now. That is on it.
It is on it, but it's really down there. The one I have is on our reports.
The expenditure. If you see. Yeah, the one you're looking at, you see right there. Cornfire fees and pastries. It's the same thing, just by a different name. So we don't want to double count.
The one I have.
Okay, then what do we have here? So let's go to the expenditure side. Unless you have any other questions on the revenue side. I'll just. Make sure that's all right. So. Expenditures are set at five thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. So we're asking this for proof.
Yes.
Anybody have any problems with finance report on the expenditure side? Okay. Go ahead. Let's approve. We motion to approve.
I always approve the expenditure side of the.
Break that second. Five thousand five hundred sixty-one. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There is one more thing I wanted to mention on there. The checking accounts down below. We will be real. You see, you still have all of them. Pidget, Highway Eight, Truck Fund. When you get. Here's where I'm going. Some might be get them off if they're closed by the end of the year because the. What they'll do? They'll see that we voted closed these accounts at the end of the year. It's still.
We have a guy who's been here since today and moving here tomorrow, Wednesday. He's auditing our local fuels. So once he's done.
Which? You're talking. So you'll take that up?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be great.
Once he's done with his audit, you can stay audit.
Great.
Every couple of years instead of every year and.
Okay, I have no problem with that. And then the Truck Fund, can you?
We're going to just write a check.
Right, right. Just write a check. For Highway Eight going forward, we've changed the name of that fund.
Yes.
All right. I think we're all done. I. Any other questions or comments on finance? So that takes us down, right? Yeah. Takes us down. We need a motion. Bring everybody up to speed. We found two bank accounts that we didn't even know that we had. We went close those accounts. Just what we've done with everything else. We have too many accounts.
Yeah, they're.
Yes, savings accounts. Excuse me, yes. There's what? Sixteen hundred dollars in collective.
Roughly.
Just to keep the operations simple or to have as few accounts as possible. So I would like to close those accounts.
Motion.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we try. That takes us down to. Any other comments on that? I'll find that. That takes us down to bylaws. Docs and bylaws. Good.
I don't have probably.
No, unless you guys need it. I'll see.
I think they're pretty much your standard.
Yeah, probably the. There's a couple of things. I want to get this done because the insurance agent requested that we have something in writing. It says the person who reconciles both the personal deposits and money were two different people. I said, what happened? I've done now. I'm not sure if that's supposed to go in bylaws or personnel points. The auditors can tell us that, that if we make a mistake, we just fix it. So I'd like to get this in writing. The stuff that we talked about in writing. Shaq, would be your chance to see these bylaws?
Okay, go for your copy.
Yeah, they're pretty simple. Let's take a moment then.
Make a couple. Watch you start that.
They're pretty elementary. We do over some of them. Basically, it says the president shall be elected the first Monday of January. I don't know if that's smart or no. On the officers, we could do it in December. So I could finish up.
You got to do your officers' first meeting every year.
Whatever your statute.
That's.
We. Okay, we have to do it by law the first.
Every two years.
Every two years. Well, we are allowed to change that as long as we don't supersede that one. We can't say we're already going to do it after four years. We can do it every one year.
Oh, I didn't know it was every. He wants to do it every year.
I'm going to do it every year.
Oh, okay, I got you.
If you have greater depth of officers, you probably could adapt the council to rotate every year.
Yes.
It's a smart thing to do. Corporations do that. You just have greater depth. And there were bad things happening. First set of eyes is always good. If you entrench somebody too long, it's the same problem, the same way. You never get it fixed.
But isn't that why you have your reorganization? You need to make that change.
But you don't. You often don't go. See, there's not in the bylaws or in the Bureau Code, there's nothing that says you can't elect the same officer for. Over and over. And that's what you. Or that's not a good thing in my opinion. And so we're going to change that to every year. I think that. I just think we'll have a better run operation if the president steps down in the office and gets some change.
Mr. President, I want to make a motion that we do a resolution. I serve the secretary.
I personally think you're way over the top there. I've got to bring this up. You know, you're killing us with procedure. I'm going to take a little break here to get off on a tangent. We have a pretty good system, Reverend, that works really well for all of us.
Well, they'll be in writing.
Writing isn't always good, Reverend. You're making us read it. These people put in enough time. The last thing they want to do is read that stuff. And I'm with them. I don't want to read it either. You can just make the motion. Here's my preference. This is what we've done up to now. We make these. We have a discussion on Wednesday where that way I know when we come here, I know how it's going to turn out because we've already discussed it. That is our preference. I found we make good decisions if we have the opportunity to discuss something and think about it. I don't like being blindsided.
Well, no, I.
I know you did, but we don't.
I sent it out to everyone.
Yeah, to me, it just seems.
I know you did. And you and I and Paul sat down and we had a discussion. I am a home health nurse. I receive doctors' orders through my email. I receive patient assignments through my email. I have a doctor coming through my email and I wanted to keep on top of borough business. So I unblock.
I did it as a courtesy. I could have brought it in.
Yeah, we would rather. Our preference, I think, is just do it on Wednesday.
That's why we do the workshop on Wednesday so that we can discuss all this on Wednesday and then bring it forward to a meeting.
Well, this puts it in a formal way in our. Or in our resolution.
I'm saying it's. We're not redoing the Constitution. These are. Resolutions bigger than our.
That's bylaws.
You know, there's basically two or three things here. Just say they can vote on. My game. I want to keep this.
It's a motion.
Okay, there's a motion out there. Anybody want to second the motion? No seconds, so it kind of dies.
Thank you.
I'm for simplicity. I would like to keep this as simple as we can, not get bogged down in procedure any more than we have to. We get a lot of work done. I want to stick with that if we can.
Well, if you vote on this, you actually stated that we could have a roll call vote.
It's in the bylaws. All that is in there. That's a duplication. It's all here.
I was going to wait until then, but I thought I might as well put it forward.
So any other thing? I'm just going to go through this real quick. If possible, council should approve any action that requires an officer's signature. And I guess it should work out maybe a little better. In advance if possible. Instead of letting the president go off half cock signing its name all over the place. Sometimes approved and sometimes you don't. All right, the following guidelines are designed to ensure that counselors and citizens have a chance to participate and to share ideas in an orderly manner. To address Borough Council, a regular monthly meeting, a minimum of one week advance notice is required. Notice must be given to the Borough Administrator at the system. And that's just in fairness, Doc. You could come in here and blindside us if anything. I like this. So I like to be prepared. I like to do my homework. So that's the reason for that. If you bring something up, it's tough. We'll have a little bit of time to discuss it. So we want a week's notice. If you don't give us a week's notice, it'll be up to the president to say we'll put you first on the agenda next time. That way we can think, just prepare. Okay, that takes us. To conserve time, any speaker can be limited to five minutes of the president's discretion. I just don't want somebody full of bullshit. Let's see if somebody come in here and talk for an hour without allow. Okay, basically, the Borough Use is not limited to the following five actions. To begin a meeting called halt order. Introduce motion. To change a motion, amend it. To accept a report without discussion, adopt. To end the meeting, adjourn. That's basic. We don't exactly follow the Robert Wool's order. There's only seven of us. Go it down to five. So we want to just keep it simple. This seems to work for us. The president shall not make motions. Any member may request an actual count or a roll call vote to verify a voice vote. Shaq likes to do that, so we put that in just for company. So otherwise, I could just simply say, no, you don't have the right. Then you don't. So because that's not in the Borough Code, so this gives you the right to have a roll call vote if you want. The director and president shall serve as ex officio members of all committees. And then we get down here to ordinance. Is that? Well, anytime we would. You don't have. Typical businesses do not have ongoing committees. Say for example, we're going to hire a director. We then put together a hiring committee. Committee would meet until the problem is solved. What you had before, it was just spinning your wheels. It's makeshift work, so nobody showed up to the committees. It wasn't meaningful. Everybody shows up to our Wednesday meetings because we do meaningful stuff and feel involved and we do things. So I'm not having committees just for the sake of having committees. It makes no sense. Nobody does it that way. What I'm doing here is just bringing good business practices to this borough. That's all.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you kindly, for sure. Okay. I'm going to. I don't know about putting this ordinance adoption procedures in here. It's basically. Can we leave that out for the moment when we approve this and discuss this later on? We're going to get into ordinances, I'm sure, next year. And this stuff is already in the Borough Code. I don't see a whole lot of reason to duplicate what's in the Borough Code. I'm just trying to clarify the code. Anybody have a problem with that? It doesn't really matter. If we leave it in and we find out, we can change it if something's wrong. I hate to be redundant, I guess. Because the code addresses that very clear. I'm not going to read all that. Okay, then here's the one that we wanted in for our insurance agent. It's loss prevention procedures. Bank accounts shall be reconciled by someone not authorized or took a deposit or withdrawn. It's just a security check. So it'll help our insurance. So I put that. And Joe, the insurance agent, wanted that in there. I told him to have that right by the end of the year. Two signatures shall be required on all checks over five hundred dollars. That enables the Borough just to function. Simple. Joe was off. Agent can still write most of the checks. A lot. Most places have it higher than that, so that's actually pretty low. And we will finally. Borough shall pay for fidelity bond to cover employees and officers with access to Borough funds. We had a surety bond, which is different than a fidelity bond. In other words, Donna had her fingers in the till. There was no insurance, so we were not covered. So we have these things in the bylaws just to prevent us from making the same mistakes over and over. That is basically it. Can we approve that? Any problems? Any discussion? If anybody wants to say on this.
I object to the second paragraph and in the loss prevention. Two signatures shall be required for all checks over five hundred. I adjusted it by.
Yeah, that's pretty much. It's low. Joe told me that when he was here. The business has to run. We can't.
I hope that's the time.
What's that?
That's too high.
It's not. It's actually too low.
Well, we've. I've been tying in chapdavon if they're only for fifteen dollars. We both.
Yeah, you do usually do, and that's not a problem. But when you were off, if something came up, she could at least go to five hundred. That's normal operating procedures for most businesses. And the insurance agent pretty much told us the same thing. We're okay there. I don't. I don't want to run into the trouble we ran into before. You know what that was? You had to wait. Something broke down and you needed something. You had to wait for officers to come up. Now the whole operation grinds to a halt. It runs much smoother, right? With YouTube being. Do you have a problem, Joe? Does it work smoothly?
The bad part of the situation is this is not our money. This is a taxpayers' money.
Well, you're a fine one to talk about that. Yes, I know that. No.
That's. Why don't we just do a vote? Let's vote to accept it. Ayes and aays. We can do a name vote. Once it's passed, it's passed. We can vote.
Good enough.
I make a motion and we vote on accepting the bylaws.
Okay.
Bylaw.
I knew we did it second first.
I'll second.
Second. Start with me? I'm in favor.
No.
I'm not. I'm not.
I'm in favor.
I'm not.
Well, just the only reason it probably shouldn't be like two fifty or two fifty should be that.
You know you're going to be bonded. If somebody is determined to steal, they're going to do that. That's going to happen. That's why we're going to have insurance. So you can overdo it. Really, for this business, five hundred does work. Most businesses are over a thousand.
Do you not pay the majority of the things that you need? Your registry and your. Basically, anything that will let me get my.
How many checks? How many checks? We actually got to sign more. How many checks?
Or have the employee's checks due without.
Dugalds.
Yeah. Dugalds. Then any like, we'll just say Ross. Any equipment that we have bought from a dealer, you know, that we have a credit line with, we'd make a check for them.
So anyway.
I mean, it varies. It varies, but you always have probably fifteen to twenty a month. And we're going to say roughly enough, not more than that.
You have very few.
We have fewer now that we have.
Oh, we have a lot less than we did in Florida. Yeah, there's a lot less.
Anyway, I just want to know what your concern is.
No, that was the only thing. It wouldn't hurt for you to two fifty.
And it's been in effect. We actually put this in effect probably by charity.
Yeah, I would say.
We voted off this one type before. All right, so we're done with bylaws. All right, that takes us down to petition to reduce counts of fraud. We need enough data. We have enough to vote. Everything's good.
Um, we printed. I gave you papers. They have sent us. I don't know. They. I did email her and I told her that obviously the population was low.
I called her Friday and I bought them. And he was in Clearfield that day. He would say to me today that I haven't heard from him at all. If we don't have twelve hundred and fifty people naturally in the. Where I. Five hundred and twenty-three is what comes up when you go online and.
The percentage is.
The percentage of Europe. Two thousand ten to five point three.
Now, can you hear my question? Are we allowed to get signatures at this point on that petition? Are we?
I got to find out. I've got. I want to find out. We should be able to get other parties too. I'm thinking we should be able to get other parties.
Oh, no, this has nothing to do with. Right. Democrats or Republicans.
Do you not have to wait till voting yet to get signatures?
No. Here's the problem that we're facing now. I started this mess. I hate to leave mess for the next one. So I wanted to resolve this. This means going to testify. You have to go to court. Testify in front of the judge. Some really simple questions, but I was hoping to finish that this year. Otherwise, it falls onto the next president. They have to go down to Clearfield that. It's not going to be hard. It's not going to take long.
If we get that. I said it. I told her just basically it's one day.
Yes, yes.
I said the rest of it is fine. If we get that fixed and we can. I don't know why we can't run with it that way.
We only need fifteen signatures. We need five percent of the voters. I think that is less than three hundred. So five times three hundred is fifteen. He wants us to get at least thirty. So I'd like to get that. I was hoping to wrap that up before my term expires. Otherwise, it falls on somebody else.
I don't know where you can go with the population.
Yeah, I don't. I don't either. Anyway. Then who's going to take that around? We all can or you? How do you want to do that?
When I find out what we're going to replace with paper and we have a couple of other things to fill out on it.
You know we're going to have to go to them because they're not going to help us. Right. Yeah, we only need. You only need fifteen. And we'll get. We should be able to easily get more than fifteen. And the goal there is to add a little competition. She only have three hundred voters and seven of us. Most of the elections are all uncontested. So we'd like to have some contested elections.
Take a paper down tomorrow and stand outside while the electric.
We don't know if we can, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if we can signature.
That's. That's the problem. It'll be no problem. If you give to each other, so we get six of the signatures. I haven't heard anybody yet. This is a Russian. That's pretty much as much as. All right, that's it. Do you guys have anything else? Managed.
Um, just. We're. The liquid fuels is being audited. They do it every couple of years instead of every year. The guy claims to be here in Kingsdale. He claims to be until Wednesday at the park. He's hoping to be done tomorrow. It went fairly well today. We have a little trouble with Frederick Moore's. It was working. He was buzzing pretty quickly. So I don't look there to be problems. A lot doesn't look like a valid rule.
Well, who needs that whole thing? Things go right for pain. That's going to be this year. So everything should be pretty clear, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty clear. He had a few things that he needed that we were able to find for him. He's really nice. Like I said, he's hoping to be done tomorrow. He said Wednesday and July. He does come up from India. But he's very patient and walking through what all he needed. Frederick didn't want to start working until around noon, so that was a bit of an issue. But once this started working. He was going.
But most of the stuff that he needed. He needed the audit. Auditor already has the stuff. So she had to make duplicates off of what she had online to give to him so that he had stuff to work with.
So far, he's been, he likes what he sees. He hasn't seen any issues so far, and I know we got 2,015 and most 2,016 coming, so.
It, it should be pretty straightforward.
It is. It's, you know-
It's relatively small sum of money. All right, so, nothing much to say about Mark going volunteering, which I thought was nice of him. He said he would have a weekend.
We have to be, well, we only want to put the light up on the weekend. We don't want to put them up during the week, what we normally do.
Because he would be working for the league.
If he's, uh, if he's gonna do it, we'd have to have some kind of a written incentive if he gets hurt, that, you know, when I'm responsible, be volunteering.
Okay. Anyway, I just thought it was a nice gesture.
Oh, yeah.
So it's around-
Joe knows how to do it.
Joe would know.
Okay. That way we decide what we're gonna do, which Joe will then also-
We should volunteer. That doesn't have to be us.
Is there anything else? That's all, that's everything that I have.
I have one thing. For Dirk Rottweil Rhodes, like, what the, what I worked with Barry Mays with for the pipe that we'll go under Forestry.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, my certificate for that run out. There's plans being served, I'm going to Newboy City and take co-op certification, recertification, that's a two-day course. But it's good for five years, and she has Mark going there, and several want it run out, so I don't wanna be in the middle of this thing and have it run out. And be having trouble with something lost and stuff.
Says month's insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, lots of good sort of files.
I can, I'll see if I, if there's still one thing again, because I can do it online. So I can see if I, 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 I'll try tonight and see if I can.
That's our, if you like, very interesting.
I submitted a motion to have the proposed budget available. We had that pursuant to the statute 1307, preparation of budget. We're to have a proposal budget 30 days prior to when we adopt it. And within that, we need 10 days, according to one 1307.
The only, you notice though, it's very specific. If you look at the bottom of that, it says the only time you ever mention is motion is when you adopt the budget. Because you have to prepare a budget, doesn't mean that you have to make a motion to prepare that budget.
Well, I thought it-
The word isn't there.
Well, that may be true, but if we do it now in this meeting, and if somebody reports it to the newspaper, you've actually advertised that you-
No, you have not. Have you?
I think you have to actually advertise it.
Okay, so, and, or you can put it on the outside door.
Well, we still, you have to run it in the paper. You have to run it in the paper. We will do that. That's-
It says or.
I gave you this. Didn't see an or there.
Yeah. Well, you, you served the notice to me.
Yeah, I said it to everybody. I said after the last meeting.
But anyway, I, I think that it should be a notice that somebody has to make a motion to advertise.
No, you don't.
Yeah.
All right, then make a motion. Go ahead.
I have the motion right here in writing, and the secretary, and I sent it to each one of you except for Mr. Rup. I don't think we have an email address.
I, I, it didn't say anything in there that you have to make a motion to advertise. I mean, because they did it before, doesn't mean it was right.
Well, I thought, well, when you, you have to give the secretary, the secretary just doesn't do things willy-nilly.
Well, now, this is willy-nilly. It's not willy-nilly. We're preparing a budget.
Yeah, we prepared it in the last-
It does not say, it says one action is taken, other places it says you have to make a motion. I send this to all of you, is when you adopt.
Well, I'll make an emotion. I'm just using my right to do that.
Don't.
And if there's no second, there's no second.
My second?
Sure.
Yeah, that's second.
Yeah, because we're gonna do the budget.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
We have a whole line out of this.
Right.
There is a line out of this.
Totally missing. We are allowed to amend.
You're allowed to make changes when you start.
Right. Yes. Well, we're not even done with the budget, so we, we're still in the preparation process.
But this will give us a 30-day officially that we're going to have 30 days before we adopt.
Go ahead.
My second.
All for you?
Aye. Aye.
No, I'm, I'm-
All right, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome. That's not, your, your motion is not what we just approved. We just gave her permission to run it in the paper. I, I don't wanna make this too complicated, Reverend. I don't want this real long. Here's what happens.
You're, you're denying, you're prejudicing my right to make a motion.
You can make a motion. I hear you.
And that's my motion, Mr. President.
What we voted on was not, I think what we voted on was for her to advertise. Now, that was very con-
No, no, I, that was my motion. It's in writing.
All right, all right. Here's, here's what I wanna avoid those type of things, if at all possible. We have, the auditors actually read this. They're gonna, they're gonna read our minutes. I don't wanna create any type of confusion or what that means.
Well, then you're not giving me the right to make a motion.
But you can make a motion. I'm not taking away your motion. Yeah, I know. Let's just let it go. Let that move on. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else? You guys, did you have anything?
Yeah, we were on your agenda.
Yep. Last one. Yeah, you're on the bottom.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if you were just visiting or going on the agenda. I did put you on that.
Well, I'm here representing the Fire Command. I just brought some moral support, basically. Uh, we are in receipt of your letter requesting certain financial things that we would be giving to you, but I would like to discuss a few of those issues. First off, our department does not do a budget like you guys. We are not required to do a budget. We by as an ASNE, funds on hand situation. So in other words, if we blow an engine in a fire truck and we don't have the $30,000 to replace it today, that doesn't get done. It stops until the funds are voluntarily raised. Okay? As far as the 2017 audit, I believe I gave you a copy of the- Angel, the last time I was here, a copy of the financial return, our 990 for 16, maybe it was for 16. Okay. I have the 17 financial, uh, copy of the return for you. No, that, this is your copy. Your other items on your list, you want a year-to-date financial report, which according to Borough Code says we need to, your Borough Code, whatever section it's under, says annual, uh, report. And we have, we have that for you inside this 990 that we report. To give you an idea of what's happening, the Fire Company spent over 98, 99 thou, 80, sorry, $89,000 in expenses in '17. Our income was $92,000, so we had a little profit, and you can't use the word profit because it's more so money in case something happens.
I'm sorry.
Of about $3,400. According to contract monies that were paid in '17, okay, because the 18 numbers are not out yet.
You can just, instead of going through that, just leave it for us.
Well, I want you folks to know it, because I see that you're filming this, and the filming has times been edited. Things are being said and not on. I don't watch it for that simple reason, because I don't want to get caught in the back and forth, he said, she said, that type of thing. Coldport Borough in '17 spent $11,250. The Cary Township paid $7,600. White Township paid $7,500. In '17, it was $26,350. Borough, the Borough of Coldport included the second half of '16 in their payment. It was late, so that's why it didn't show up till a following year. Uh, these monies were used for insurances, truck loans if any, truck maintenance, truck haul maintenance, and some firefighting equipment. Uh, to give you a total cost of what it, your contract money of $7,600 goes toward is $70,075.45 of the 7,600 that, that you have in your contract. Uh, the breakdown is for fuel, maintenance of the vehicles, maintenance, equipment purchases, insurance on the properties or the building or the trucks and that kind of stuff. Uh, and adding all that together, it's, it's on this form itself. So you have that portion. As far as having a breakdown of the municipalities, this is public record, which can, anyone can get off of the internet. Going to Clearfield County EMA, the Borough of Coldport, uh, the breakdown is Coldport Borough with QRS runs. Let me get to the right page here, sorry people. Uh, is 80 runs, QRS runs for the Borough of Coldport, out of the total of, I believe it was, page 521 runs. Of the fire calls, which include vehicle accidents, structural fires, public assist, all that kind of stuff. Coldport Borough had a total of 20 in 1970, 20, 2017. Uh, the total fire emergency runs and all that was 142. So there's your breakdown of your municipalities. The other municipalities are listed there. ISO report, I have no idea what you guys are looking for. Contact your insurance company to get your, uh, what you need there. Your rating is a five, and the ISO is set by Fire Company Material, 911 Center, Water Company, that type of thing. So it's all, there's other issues in the ISO rating, where it's saying that you wanna report, I have no idea. Training records, certificates of all members, that's a personnel thing, and according to the Borough Stat, we don't need to do that. Contracts for the other municipalities, if you wish to see their contracts, contact them. Uh, I feel, and our department feels that we have met your obligation of your letter. We are in receipt of your breaking the contract for next year. We would like to meet with your Fire Committee to discuss the matter and to see where we go from there. You did the proper thing by giving the, the number of days notice, according to what our solicitor has, has proposed to us. We have contacted our attorney on, on the matters, and it has cost the Fire Company funds, but it did not cost Fire Company funds. They were in a, unanimously.
Anonymous.
No, thank you. Uh, given to the Fire Department to cover any legal expense that we may incur on this matter. Um, the contract is broken at the year-end. You are obligated to pay for the full year of this year of '17, and we would like to negotiate and see what you guys will come up with. We understand wholly that you're down on population, wholly that you are down on real estate value, values and everything else. But at the same time, you need to keep in mind what this Fire Department has given to this community in ways of grant monies, replacing fire equipment, keeping the ratings where they're at into a, a, for a volunteer status, a five, which is, is good. Dubois City has a one, but they have also been, uh, you have to buy a ladder truck.
What's the scale?
From one to 10?
One to 10.
One to 10.
10 being worse.
10 being worse, yes.
We, we moved from a seven to a five after the purchase system was put in.
Yes. Now, to get it down lower, our next option would be to have you folks pay for a paid Fire Department, which would cost probably about $250,000 to $300,000 a year, which we know, you know, I know, everybody knows, that's not going to happen. Okay? Uh, according to our solicitor, it takes about $120,000 a year to run a volunteer department. I kinda disagree with that number. I think a lot of it, it's probably lower than that.
Yeah, listen, you know the budget submitted the other Fire Company's relative.
You cannot judge Company One to Company Two to Company Three. Reed Township, for example, their Fire Department, which is over 10 miles from here, is, is a different budget than Irvine, 2 miles down the road. You have to look at the equipment. I have, I don't question their budget or where they get their monies. I am sure that they probably operate on the same premises that we do, that they can't buy something until they have the funds to do it. It's just one of those things that occurs. Uh, I feel personally that our Fire Department has given back to this community over and over again.
Well, you know, nobody questioned it. Well, you, you are- This was a business decision. It has nothing to do with quality of service.
It, it is to a point when some of the comments that were supposedly allegedly made on tape and on film, I, like I said, I will not get into that, because I, I don't believe in having this meeting recorded to be edited.
It wasn't edited.
I was told that it was edited.
It's, it's as it went?
Well, according to the one gentleman that I talked to, that he was at the meeting here, that part of it was not put on to the tape, because the guy, I guess the guy may have gone irate or yelled or something, I don't know. I didn't watch it. I, so I'm not going to sit here, but I, I personally think that filming is not-
Lawfully, if I may interject, I'm sorry, or I can wait.
No, no, no.
Uh, lawfully, I can only do when he says that the meeting starts and when he, and when it's done. That's, so I have to cut everything previous to when he calls, calls for order and when it's, and when he-
Well, Mr. Spade, well, the way, the way I feel is a lot of time people don't want to say what's totally on their mind when they're on a film.
You can ask for a second session if it's for negotiation only.
A negoti, uh, executive session should not probably be recorded anyway.
No, no. No, that's what, I'm, if you want an executive session to negotiate with us, yeah, I can turn it off. And all the other, anyone that's not part of, the President has a rule over it.
Right, but, but an average citizen, us, we cannot come to your meeting and ask you to go to the executive session. That is a board decision to make that.
That's right, but you can make that request. Yeah. Right. For those things, we need to break.
The, the big thing is I have that stuff for you. The company, company has, like I said, talked, you know, we, we have discussed the matter fully. Our attorney, Kim Hauser, out of Greensburg, has already looked at items that he needed to look over and gave us a recommendation back to you. I do recommend you guys look at the Borough Code. I, I don't know the to, the title number offhand, because there are so many. Like you mentioned earlier, if you go here, there, there.
Look at your financials. That's our thing.
Right, and that's what we're, that's what we're going to do. That is what we have given you. We cannot give you the 18s because they are not approved yet.
Well, I don't think we would ask for them.
Yes, yes, they do.
We set up to date.
Yes, yes. What we wanted, I, I can't imagine not having a budget like we can, and keeping track of your expenditures on a monthly basis. Now, I read a 5013C, and I was required to have a budget.
We, we do an income expense report, which you need, but that is not, uh, that is not a yearly report that is available until the year end.
You would sum that up.
We don't, we do not do that until the year end.
That sounds like pretty shiny bookkeeping.
I don't- I, I take, I, I take offense to that for a simple, for a simple, for a simple reason. This has been the same way at this department, our department, for over 50-some years. I've been in the department over 40-some years, and it, and that's the way it has always been.
Well, because it's always been that way, doesn't mean that it's right, Jack. With today's bookkeeping, you can do accounting right up to the minute. Walmart, one of their big stores-
If a person wants to take the time to do, become a computer guru or a digital-
Or you don't need to become a computer guru. It's not that hard. I mean, if it's only an $80,000 budget, we should be able to keep track of every cent right up to the tape, which is what we're trying to do here. They didn't keep track of it.
Our, our department gets, our department on a, a monthly basis gets a treasurer's report, which is not what you want.
Yes, we'll take that. We'll take that. I'd like to see the treasurer's report.
That shows our numbers. We will give you our annual report at the year-end. I mean, it says annual, I believe it says in the title, uh, annual. Mr. Rup, would you mind looking that up? You have a book there in front of you.
Which one is it?
That's not the new one.
Yeah, that's the new one.
I thought they weren't putting it in there.
24th January.
Now, are you providing us with a balance sheet, Jack?
As of last seventeen, yes.
That's fine, all right. As long as we can see some numbers.
Yes.
The numbers.
That's four-four-ten-fifty-seven.
Site number three. That's specific powers of her.
Emergency service organization, receiving borough funds provided to the borough and annualized assessment of all its penalties. Of those funds before the borough makes a thorough budget, additional penalty to the organization.
Anywhere.
Got the what you're following by?
Yeah, yeah.
See, as long as we have it, we'll have something to look at.
I also gave you a list of the current officers which have been changing, or possibly changing, I should say. December, our meetings, our, our elections tell in December it changes. At that point in time, eight officers...
It doesn't work till January? You change it right then and there?
December is when our election is.
Oh, but then your officers actually change and change.
January.
Okay.
That's it.
I think, unless you guys have a question or two for me?
No, hopefully, well, after, before we review, goodness.
Just want to say, Jack, I appreciate the fire company does. You know, it's a, it's a terrible situation, you know, putting on the money and, you know...
It is, but it's a slap in the face, Kevin, too. Leo and I have talked and, you know, it's what the, it's not that anyone in the fire company is making any money. Nobody gets paid for anything. It's all volunteer.
We all have a hardship story.
I know that, I know that. But, but a month ago, we had numerous guys go to the park to make an extra three thousand dollars to pay expenses that might be coming up. Okay? I wish you guys to do that as council, which you don't.
Look, I'm gonna give you our reality here. Our real estate, now some of this, our property taxes, what we take and spend down, not ten thousand dollars, two thousand in IP, forty thousand dollars. So, there's no money to give you. We can't, I mean, we're probably gonna get nothing from us, it's just impossible, Jack.
But you need to.
We, we can't give you what we don't have. What do you suggest we do?
Right, right now, Jack.
What are you gonna do for fire protection?
Well, you're probably still obligated to provide that, whether we give you, we're not allowed and required to give you a donation, but you are required to provide fire protection. I'm sorry, it's come to this, but the money is not there, it does not exist.
We give compensation, but it's money that we're giving.
Mandates.
But that is...
That's mandated.
That has to be that.
Required by law.
And be very fortunate that you're not like other departments where you have claims, that your premiums go up drastically. I'm not going to, that we, that doesn't happen to us, but it could.
But just because claims were made that we weren't giving anything...
Yes, that, that's right.
And that's, I just wondered if it served out in the meeting.
So what you're required by law, you're saying, you know, out of your own free will, don't have to do that by law.
That's, that's right.
That, that, that's not a donation, that's not contract money.
That's right.
That's something you must provide.
Right, yes.
It still costs us money.
It still costs you money, and everything still costs you money. I got a seventy thousand dollar grant for the fire department, that's gonna still cost me money for my share.
When he said his share, meaning the department's share.
Yeah, meaning the department's share, to protect my firefighters and protect our community that we serve.
Our, our department has been very fortunate over the last fifteen years without all the grants that out there. I mean, for the amount of monies that have come into this community is, is outrageous. I mean, just...
Right, that's the point. Your financials are much better than ours. We don't have that luxury. You're asking us to, I wish we could give, we've all said that. This is a strictly business decision. Money does not exist.
We, we realize that, but there's other options that you may have.
We're already on off-street lights and, and, you know...
Well, you saved eleven doll, whopping eleven dollars a month, turning the back off.
No, we're hoping, we're hoping that we're gonna save on that.
No, that's something else, that's an experiment.
Yes, no matter what.
Correct, care, Kevin.
I, I wanna be totally honest and on camera, and we've all said a hundred times how much we appreciate you, and I think the last meeting when we were threatened by a fire, that we still said, guys, we appreciate what, this isn't about what you guys do. I mean, you go out and you cut down trees, racks, the whole nine yards, that is not the issue here. The issue here is plain and simple, we can't get blood out of the tunnel. If I can't pay any worker, I can't pay the electric bill, and there is no borough, you're not gonna get no money.
Correct.
Correct. When it comes to the end of the year for the budget, we've already said that we will go through the budget, what money is sitting there prior to doing, we will determine how much we can give the fire company if any. We can't make that decision right now because we don't got our budget for the following year, or what money we need. And as you know, we, we have gone over the last ten years and went from sixty thousand dollars, now we're guessing and hoping that we can get forty thousand dollars.
Just unreal.
Now, when you start fixing storm drains and you start trying to get equipment to where you can at least fix the storm drain, that costs money, obviously it costs money.
And that's where your liquid fuels come in.
And that's where the liquid fuels, and that's only twenty-six thousand dollars. Okay?
That little tax you're on costs us over thirty thousand.
Thirty-one thousand dollars. We had to save two years to do that. So it's not like we're not saying right off the bat, we're not giving any. We're telling you right now, our budget's gonna say we're not giving any until we have...
I, I agree with what you're saying, but in the same token, remember that a fire truck today costs over five hundred thousand dollars.
Our department bought one for two and twenty-three thousand...
I don't know who your department is, but is it, is it, is it cert, is it certified? Is it, is it, oh, and it's up, meaning that within the ten-year period?
It's within the...
Does it meet within the ten-year period? I mean, I'm not here to get in a shouting match with you, because you run with another department. What I'm, what I'm saying is...
You don't have to buy a fifty thousand dollar truck. You know, yes, they, they look nice, they're, they're beautiful, they're well-equipped. But our truck puts out the fire just like yours does. Our truck gets there just like yours does.
I don't want to get into a shouting match or anything, but...
No, I don't want to.
The, the, the equipment that we have gotten has been gotten through grants. This department, our department and this community can never afford a five hundred thousand dollar truck. We would be in the same boat as Reed, or Irvona, or Plant Hope, or whoever you want to name, if it wasn't for the grants that we required over the past few years to get us the newer equipment, to get the fire ratings down to where they're at. Because that's a, that's a, that's part of the overall equation.
And may I add one thing? It was done, no to us, the fire department, because in-house people wrote the grants and volunteered the fire.
Let me ask all you guys this, what percentage of our budget should we get to firm?
I don't know, like I said, I don't know what your total budget is.
I, I don't know, you guys haven't made your budget yet. That's why we wanna meet.
Actually, less than what you have left over.
Is fifty percent fair? Is that too high?
No, that's why we need to talk with the...
Here's the number, here's some of your numbers. We're giving you roughly fifty. Do you have a number that you feel would, I mean, would benefit?
We'd rather say what you, what you...
I, I knew their numbers are different than my numbers.
Yeah. Are you, are you, let me ask you, is your number more than where it is now, I'm sure?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
No. I mean, there's not like there can't be a working agreement, you know? If it's gonna benefit us and still help you guys.
The department as a whole has realized that the borough has lost population, has lost real estate.
Right.
We understand that. We understand that.
Yeah, I, like I said, if we could work on it, you know, or, you know, we could still help, you know, do what's right for the taxpayers and citizens.
I understand.
When you, when you bring up neighboring companies into a picture, that's not fair to us because we don't want to talk negative on those companies. And that's not right on your part, bringing that up.
I don't think it's taken any aspects of that you guys spent too much money.
The more money and grants you get, the power to you. But what we're saying is if you can get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants and we can't get five thousand dollars in grants, where does it make sense that I hand you seven thousand dollars? That, that's what I'm saying, Jack. But, but that was, you know, and then the last meeting, so that we can end this, obviously after the budget's done, you're more welcome to come up here and we'll try and work something out with it. We wanna work something out, okay?
Just always, always remember this was just on...
I don't, I don't want the rumors started again that the borough's not doing nothing for the fire side, that the borough's cutting the fire.
Right, well, when I, when I heard, when I heard the number that the borough was going to pay zero to three thousand dollars, that's like a slap in the face.
But it's not gonna be more than three or four thousand.
And like I said, our department understands that it's going to be less than what...
Yeah, let's look at some numbers. Every dollar that flows into this place comes to a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
And how much is your life worth for the, having the department come in? I mean, I hate to say it, I hate to say it that way, or your property or, or anything else.
Because our next move is shut the building down, and then the Cold Museum can leave, and we'll just say it's because we had to donate to the fire company. You know what I'm saying? You're not making sense. You're wanting money from somebody that doesn't have it. Now, donation is a donation. The last time I looked up, the definition of donation is what you're going to give.
This should be tabled as a request and a special meeting to, to negotiate this. That will give us time to look at the records and fairness to, to them and to us. Just because I'm, I'm after our budget's tabled.
But it's, it's a budget.
Just, just one, now, just one thought for, for Kevin, he just mentioned about the budget and Calvin mentioned. A budget's a budget. It's where you're supposed to be. It doesn't mean, it doesn't unlock you in stone. Just so everybody...
Well, it's been locked in stone, or you only have a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, you're pretty well locked in stone.
Then you're, when you, then, then when it, then when it comes December, you turn off, you turn, when you already exceeded your penelec bill, you don't pay it anymore?
Well, you ain't make budgetary transfers if you have money in another account.
Well, there's no budgetary transfers. This is a simple, straightforward cash accounting budget. There, there are no other accounts. Budgetary transfers are you taking money from one type of account and bring it to another. None of that happens here, really.
You could.
There are no other accounts, there are no accounts to take from.
It's categories, categorically. I think that's where you're going with that.
Thank you. That's what, that's what, I mean, if one category has two hundred dollars left, you can transfer.
Well, of course, that's, we almost played that game.
Right.
This budget is, our budgeting is, will be pretty darn accurate. We know what our expenditures will be in approximately every category.
Our secretary did it.
Yes, well, there, there's, I'm just saying, if you have no money, it's pretty darn difficult. That's our reality, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to run a borough.
And you say what twenty-five adds, liquid fuel.
Yes, twenty-six of that is liquid fuels, which we can't give to you. Go ahead, do you have a question?
I said, sorry, are you running in the red this year?
We are, it's gotta be, we're trying not to. We're thinking of cutting out, we're gonna cut out streetlights so we don't run in the red. Yes, it's, it's a rule. It's not counting liquid fuels because we can't give that to you. It's a hundred thousand dollar budget. There's people in this room that make more than, our whole house is on more than that. We're trying to run a borough.
No, yeah, absolutely. I was just asking basically because the seventy-five hundred is in this one.
Not in the one I'm talking about now, it's in the previous one, and we have to cut that...
For this year, I think that's where you're going.
Because, yes, yeah, two thousand and eighteen, yes. Because we couldn't make it. So we took that out and we would barely, or I think we will be in the black, barely so. We're struggling. And we cut a lot of other costs.
In the budget we have right now to be up front with them, we have nothing budgeted for a donation, is that correct?
That's correct. At this point, and that put us over... Without your donation at all, we're at a hundred and eight, almost a hundred and nine thousand dollars. That puts us in the red because we're not, I'm not trying to count liquid fuels in there. So we, we are in a dilemma. This is, it's a mess, I'm sorry that it is, but it affects you. I'm sorry that it is that way, but that's our reality.
The budget now is by motion, ready, that you can look at. And if you can see where we can save money, and we can, we can work with him. It is, it is ready, prepared, and the secretary will have a copy of it.
Well, not quite, listen, you don't have the exact insurance number yet.
I've got a rough, I've got a rough idea of insurance, but that is all it is right now.
But you have a right to see, you have a right to see by it.
You can have a copy of what we have so far, and it's a script.
This is where they notice the same line.
Yeah, Calvin, going, going back to what you were saying, setting a time, when it's when you want to meet.
Jack, to be honest with you, if we have a Wednesday meeting where we can go through the material that you gave us, and at the same time we're gonna do the budget, then the secretary can go, you know, ask for a date, you know, in December. Okay? But we're probably not looking until the end of November, December, one of our Wednesday meetings, where it's an open discuss deal, where we can talk about...
I just asked, it's not the third?
Well, fourth Wednesday, that's our meeting. Well, we're flexible, we're, 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 more than, fairly, whenever we discuss this, personally, sit down, show you where our money is, see what we, what questions we have on what you gave us, so that it's, we're talking about the same thing.
And can I make a comment on this, that what Angel just gave us? The fire insurance pass-through?
Yes.
Okay. Those numbers aren't derived until late July, August?
Right. We just, what we do is we know we're gonna get it, we know we have to give it to you. So we keep track of it because it's in our account.
And actually, it does not, it does not go to the fire department. It goes to the relief association, which is a separate entity.
Right, and you get to use it, you're separately audited for that, right.
And that's the only reason it's on there, because we don't wanna show people that we have it.
And you don't, and we give it away. Budgeting is your best guess, so what we do is we, our best...
Mr. Winslow used to use the word guesstimate, and he was exactly right, it was a guesstimate of what it was gonna happen.
So we took last year's numbers and we put them in with it for this year, assuming it'll be pretty close. It used to be a little higher, this is more as much as two thousand, two hundred, now we got down to one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five. So it went down.
Yeah, I mean...
And as the population goes down, it will go down as well. And my, my guess is, like, like right now, we're not, Coldport makes up about nineteen percent of your entire surface area, that number is likely to go down. I looked it up, that's the number, it's not favorable, even if that's...
Well, it's, it depends on what number...
Where did you derive the numbers from? Like, in France, I come up with different numbers.
Well, we get them a couple different places. One, one you get them from the audit and charter, is where these numbers are derived from, because they watch, um, airborne fire...
It's based upon real estate, it's rate, real estate population, and it's calculated on the amount of people buying insurance in real estate houses.
Out of state buyers, yes, and those not incorporated here, then you divide it by this population, that whole poll. Right, I know the formula, it's not all that complicated, but what I'm telling you, as our population goes down, it has gone down from the two thousand and ten census, that number will likely go down. And also, the percentage of your total area that you serve, and your area right now makes up fifty percent of your surface area, white towns, thirty-one percent, Coldport, a nineteen percent. We will likely be less than nineteen percent after the two twenty census, when the area will be...
Projecting out.
Yes, I project, that, that will be accurate in twenty-twenty.
And a lot of, well, a lot of it depends upon what happens at the end of the year end. And population increasing in the township by, by building and that kind of stuff.
The townships have probably gained slightly in population from what I see while Coldport has lost, therefore these per... Therefore, these percentages will change. And, and so, you just get less money. It just gets tighter on us.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, I'm sorry this became adversarial. It's never intended to be this way. I'm just trying to share our financial situation.
I mean, it's, it's just like every time you lose a building in the borough, it hurts you.
Well, right, that's what I said. Our taxes, $10,000, that's a pretty big chunk. It's almost 10% of our budget less. So, now we're operating on a budget that's 10% smaller than 2,018. That's unsustainable. So, you know, one of the few things we can cut is the donation to the fire company. There's nothing else we can cut. We're thinking of leaving this building to get our utility costs back so we can survive a little longer. That's how desperate it is.
I can understand what you mean by that, but at the same token, don't forget that the building, if you did get out of the building, you don't get any for it, because I believe that it reverts back to the school district.
Correct, correct.
But we didn't pay anything for it.
No.
Yeah, but now, now, that's not exactly, because if we build right out here, if we're on this property, we still, we still get used to all the property. We can, we can tear this building down as long as we're using the property, whose stock is in it, then refers to the school district. And that might not be a bad thing. In my mind, that's the foolish thing for them to put in there, because that's a way for us to get out from under this if we have to. We can just walk, and then they get it back. It's their way out.
Probably why that was done, all more than anything else, is probably under their code, the school districts.
It is censurated that the...
That they can give to a municipality, but they can't, they have to budget, or not budget, sell or to, to the public, or that's probably...
Well, it's a sort of furniture class.
Would they have been able to sell the building?
The school district, yeah.
Yes, they're allowed to sell.
Our, our mayor...
I consider this a dumb move.
Sign take...
Some deed.
But it's a 2007 statute that the schools retain.
If there's nothing, nothing else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment, guys. As soon as we...
Have a good night.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah. That's right, you were, you were on school board, you were...
She's the one that's something to do.
Good night, thank you. Hey, Mike? Can we have a stop sign up by Uteville Church on Dillon Road?
Go on, talk to the supervisors.
Because when you're coming up Church Hill Road and somebody's coming to Dillon Road and you're coming around the corner for the church...
You're going right up there to church in Uteville. That's state highways. That's state highways.
If they're on the top where Dillon Road is?
Yeah, it's state until you get out there, um, right before, um, Mrs. Murray's place. Uh, up on top of the hill from Mrs. Murray's.
Right by the cemetery.
Yeah, no, no, that's all, that's all state. The, the township, uh, doesn't take that until it turns into the, um, tartan chipped is where...
The one Beer's used to live down past that a little bit.
Yeah, past Mr. Beer's place.
Yeah.
Yeah, is where the township actually takes over that road.
Did you have anything, Mike?
No, I just, I'd like to thank you guys for what you're doing, because I know you have a rough, it's rough to operate with no money.
Yes.
You know, and you're all sitting here, and, you know, none of you guys get paid. And Kelvin, you and Nud are doing a real good job with what you have to work with.
Thanks, Mike.
I appreciate you guys did a lot to get that water away from going down into the yard there, just by going around when, when it was raining to see what was going on with it. And I can see a, a big change in how that's going, and I just want you to know, it's appreciated.
I'm glad you brought that.
Mr. President, he fixed my problem too.
All right. There was no favoritism required to it.
I'm, I'm just glad to see that you're trying to get some drainage issues resolved in other sections of the town too, and it's not cheap to do it. You don't have water resources.
That's the problem, we have no resources. Is there any, is there any money?
The other resources we have, we have walls.
Yeah, that's it. Joe, do we have any other business?
We have, it's...
Yeah, we do. Well, Jack, Amy, this we came in. It's from Scott McMaster's, and it just says, "I would like to propose to Coldport Borough a donation of three lots described as a mental control disorder." It says, "Located on the west side of the intersection of Forest through R.R. Street. If donation of the real estate is accepted, I will ensure all property taxes are paid to me. I will pay all legal expenses to cover the real estate, as listed on title, same day received when I purchased them 15 years ago. I will pay hold to the 66th quarter appraisal of said real estate and any accounts of delicate asset appraisal. The transfer would need be completed no later than December 30, 2018. Thank you in advance and in advance."
We talked about this briefly at the, at the last meeting, but there's no solution, so we probably shouldn't decide.
Make a motion that we accept his offer, and then we send a letter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you sound like you have reservations, do you?
No, I mean, we might as well take it because when we're in other, we're on the money from the next one.
A personal thought, um, a letter, babe? Do you want to retire because of... I'm saying, we saw it, we're not because of...
He tried, but he's trying since he's a father.
Right.
I mean, it was not from there, but...
Right, right. That's right, my thought was, give him a part of the burden.
Those, those, those are the worst houses.
Right. Chuck, Chuck. Then Rod Keats, I think.
Yeah.
The downward side, that's the side we're talking about. Downhill side.
Downhill side, is that the side?
Yes, yes, straight down.
To my house.
Yes, yes.
What would it be worth, people?
Enough.
He said he's gonna get an appraisal.
He's gonna appraise it.
Yeah, he said he's gonna hold the appraisal.
We offered it to the fire company, left them sell.
There you go.
That'd be our donation?
Yeah.
So, we're, we're taking that as a motion?
Yeah, yeah. I'll send the other one.
Any other business?
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Can we send the fire department first half of their money for this year now that